Good evening and welcome to the Pittsburgh Board of Education meeting. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Thanks, Robyn and Sarah. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We are so pleased to present a scholar athlete scholarship recipient this evening. It's a mouthful for me. John Santowski is with us this evening. We welcome you. We welcome Scott Barker, our Athletic Director. Scott? The floor is yours.
Thank you. As most of you know, we tend to do a lot of our athletic awards at season-ending banquets or Sports Excellence Awards, but this one's different. And we thought it was very appropriate, and I'm glad that we could make this happen, for John to be honored in front of our Board of Education. So thank you for giving us the time. John, I'm going to have you come up and stand with me. And if you knew John, this might make him feel a little bit uncomfortable, but he's very deserving of this. And I want to thank you because you are what a student athlete and a scholar athlete are all about. John models that on a daily basis, both in-school, out-of-school, practices, games. He is the person that I would turn to and say, if you want to be a student athlete or a scholar athlete, this is the guy that you got to model after. So appreciate everything that you've done. So today, we are here to give John two plaques. He actually gets a third one on Friday, all right? And a fourth one that we just found out about today. So John has a lot of awards, rightly so, coming his way. As athletic administrators, we belong to the NIA triple A, which is the National Interscholastic Athletic Administration Association. It's a lot of As. NI triple A. And there are levels. There is the national level, regional level, state, and then a chapter level. So John started this whole process by being recommended and then filling out the application as the local Section Five Scholar-Athlete, which has a nice scholarship that goes with it. And we were very excited, I think in February, January, February, when we found out that John was selected as the Section Five Award winner. With that award-winning, he then moves on to the state level. And in February, we got a call from the state athletic awards chairperson saying that John had also won the state award. So in March, I was able to accept the plaque I'm going to give him today at our state conference in Saratoga. Well, when you win the state award, you get pushed on to the regional award. And a few weeks ago, we got another call from the regional awards chairperson stating that John was also the recipient of Region One Scholar-Athlete of the Year. And Region One is all of the Northeast in our country. So if you look at draw a line at New Jersey and Pennsylvania and go all the way up to Maine, that's what John was up against. Hundreds of thousands of athletes that are participating on a daily basis for fall, winter, and spring, and John is our award winner. So he's not done. He then becomes the Region One nominee for our national award. And in July, the National Awards Committee will meet, review all of the 12 candidates that are put forward of the different regions, and John, I think, has a really good chance of winning our national award. So he has been on this process. I think you started filling those applications out in like December, right? Yeah. And it's been a lot. So we really look forward to whether that national award comes about, but even if it doesn't, that's icing on the cake. John has done everything that we have asked him to do. And just again, when you talk about scholar athlete, the first thing is scholar. And as a three-sport athlete, which is very difficult in today's day and age, as of last week, John is carrying a 97.8 average at Mendon High School, all right? And a very rigorous curriculum. He's managing three sports. We have our coach, two of our coaches with. I'd like to introduce Coach Hurley, who is the Mendon Soccer Coach, Coach Whipple, who is our boys' lacrosse coach, and Coach Pitt Nero, who is a wrestling coach, could not be here tonight, but sends his best to you, John. John has been part of teams that have won multiple individual and team championships. He has won multiple individual and team awards, and he's earned multiple varsity letters. And it doesn't surprise me that when you have an athlete like John on your team, success comes with it. I'd like to just end this before I actually present the plaques of using John's words because part of the application required an essay. And John was asked what athletics, how athletics has impacted his life. "I have been fortunate to be selected captain on multiple soccer, wrestling, and lacrosse teams throughout high school. However, the most impactful award given to me was the Todd Polino Number Nine jersey in honor of a former soccer player who lost his life in the World Trade Center on 9/11. This jersey is given to the ideal teammate each year on my soccer team. Being awarded this pushed me to be better in every aspect of my life. With it being a well-known award in the community, I knew that not only would my teammates and coaches be looking up to me, but also younger players that strive to be the best in all that they can do. The development of time management skills, effective communication, and leadership have been a key to a successful high school experience. These lessons will remain with me throughout my, both my collegiate journey and my professional career. Learning how to balance schedules, proactively solve problems, deliver against timelines, effectively communicate, and demonstrate servant leadership are all skills that I have developed over these past years as a student athlete. Learning these lessons at a young age has allowed me to make mistakes along the way and still continue to develop into an organized and responsible person. As I continue into the college and workplace, I will be able to build on the lessons I learned to excel in all aspects of my life. Whether it's balancing school, sports, as well as a job in college, or coaching a coworker at a new job, I know that I will be a much better equipped thanks to the life skills that I have gained through my involvement in high school athletics." John is attending Washington and Lee University and will wrestle for them at the collegiate level. And John, on behalf of both our state association, I present you with the plaque as the state Scholar-Athlete Award winner. And on behalf of our regional, national association, I present you with the Region One Plaque Scholar-Athlete. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So if I could just make a remark, I know I see your mom there. And as a mom, there's nothing, that's such a proud moment. And you really have made this table proud, this district proud. But to see your mom and how proud she is is just, gets you right there. So congratulations to you. Well deserved.
And if I can add just a couple of thoughts. Before Scott read your essay, I wasn't sure if he was going to read the whole thing or bits and pieces, but I was hoping he would highlight the Todd Polino part of it. Because while this is a scholar athlete recognition, in my mind, it's also a character recognition as well. And I speak with Todd's parents multiple times annually. They're always very interested in this recognition and who's received it. And it feel really good that someone that can represent Todd is wearing that jersey. So it means a lot to me as being friends with the family. But as superintendent, it means a ton that you're representing us and doing so well. So congratulations. Really proud of you. My next question is, who is your favorite of the three coaches? If you could, if you could just send me an email, just send me an email, rank order, that would be great. Congratulations. And you do not have to endure the full meeting.
No.
Go celebrate.
Thank you. We're pretty slim on Board of Education reports right now. Nothing ahead of us. We, we had an audit, didn't we have an audit oversight committee meeting? Any reports out on that?
I wasn't able to make that meeting, so Darren, and I'm sorry, I've not had a chance to follow up with you. So I'm hoping you're able to speak to me.
The Audit Oversight Committee awarded Renee a scholarship. She's serving a life sentence. We had Tom Zuber from the external audit firm, Mango Metzgerbar. He reviewed with the Audit Oversight Committee the preliminary audit in the audit function, as well as highlighted some changes from the Accounting Standards Board for next year, as well as some of the intricacies of the federal stimulus funny, money, funny, money, and how to do the audits for that, and some of the impacts there and the long-range planning of that. Also talked about the importance of long-range financial planning, our reserves, and our financial health. From there, we went to the claims auditor, as far as what goes on every time we do the warrants or the accounts payable. And we looked at the special focus area that you see tonight for the internal audit.
Thanks, Darren. We do have some dates to remember. The 20th of June is in celebration of Juneteenth, and so we will be closed. The 21st is our next scheduled meeting. And the 24th, oh, 22nd, sorry. Okay. We can just make that amendment. And the 24th, which is Friday of June, is our graduation at Mendon High School at 4:00 PM and Sutherland High School at 7:30. Financial report, Darren.
Thank you. First up, we have the proposed budget for 2022-23 for food services. It was a real challenge to do this budget, considering all the volatility and various costs. While participation is resuming, much better than it was from last year when we were in the hybrid model, costs are extraordinary right now and continue to go up. Excuse me. I will draw your attention to, and I apologize, the more I look at numbers, and I tend to see things each time I go through it, and tonight I noticed that the total budget is a 3.1% increase, not 2.2. The dollar amounts are accurate, so I will get you a corrected version of this. But we're recommending a 3.1% increase to the budget. That's, to put it in perspective, that's compared to more than an eight and a half percent CPI right now. And the overall food index is 20.5% that we're dealing with, and I got that from the National Association. Labor in the food service industry is about 16.3% increase. So these are the types of things we're contending with because when we try to hire people, we're competing with the private sector. In order to accomplish this and make this balance, because as you know, we're only one of five school districts that I'm aware of in the state that are not part of the federal or state nutrition programs, so therefore we do not get the subsidy, we're recommending a 50 cent increase in lunch prices. Last year, we increased lunch prices. We did not increase for the four years prior to that. Just before I came in here, I was, received data from most of the schools in the county. Most of them are increasing their lunch prices about 36% or 60, on average, 60 cents. They are a little bit less than us as far as their average price by about 50 cents, but they're also receiving that subsidy. That's the proposed budget of a little over $2.1 million.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the food service budget? Thanks, Pete. And Jeff? Do we have questions there? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the special focus area for the internal auditor. It was kind of a topsy-turvy time in the sense that we were going through the end of the pandemic, then our auditor actually contracted COVID, and then shortly thereafter, via a very brief, two-sentence email, announced that he was no longer doing auditing anymore. So we were waiting for a more finalized report, and then we got that. So that's part of the reason why this report might have a different look to the past. The special focus area was to look at the interaction and communications and processes between HR and payroll. Some of that was due to the pandemic, as well as a lot of turnover. And the special focus area recommended some improvements in certain areas, such as in the personal action notice, and also targeted some areas that are challenging, such as stipends and some of the special things that go on, trying to keep track of it all and make sure payroll's done correctly. But they did not find anything of substantial note.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the internal auditor's report? Thanks, Ted and Sarah. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Human resource report, Sean.
Good evening. First for your consideration is the professional staff report. We have one certificated part-time to probationary appointment, seven certificated staff appointments, one certificated staff increase in FTE, one regular substitute to probationary change, one administrative appointment for coordinator of social emotional learning, two SRP appointments, three terminations due to positions ending for regular subs, one abolishment of an administrative position of coordinator of technology, one appointment for the reinstatement of the position director of technology, one school nurse resignation, one SRP resignation, and one teacher resignation.
Is that everything?
On the professional staff.
May I have a motion, please? I saw Robyn and I heard Renee, so Renee, Robyn. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the support staff report. We have one bus driver resignation for retirement with 11.4 years of service. We have two cleaner appointments and four summer helper appointments.
May I have a motion, please? Thanks, Ted and Sarah. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Curriculum report, Melanie.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to share with you an update on some work that's been happening at the high schools relative to their master schedule work, and it's been happening under fairly quick timelines, which is a little unusual to say when coupled with working on master schedule. So usually, that's a multi-year, very ambitious, laborious process. But for reasons that I think will become clear to you, it's work that we push forward for very good reasons, really efficiently. So it has to do with our elimination of the 10th-period science labs in our schedule. We have had at both high schools 10th-period science labs. They have been in existence for decades, certainly longer than I've been in the district, longer than really anybody who's currently working or teaching at the high schools can remember. And I will share with you, it's no exaggeration to say that literally my very first meeting that I took as Assistant Superintendent for Instruction 11 years ago was on this topic of 10th-period labs, where the two counseling department heads came to me and said, we have this problem, these 10th-period labs, it's not right, we need to do something to get rid of those labs. And here we are 11 years later, and I'm finally delighted to share with you that we're actually, have made some movement. We had an MOA that was created in October 2011, and I just put a little, pulled a little blurb from that that stated, "Whereas the Pittsburgh Central School District and the Pittsburgh District Teachers Association acknowledge that after-school labs are not advantageous for all students or staff and should be within the current nine-period schedule." And then the MOA goes on with a whole lot of agreed-to and where has that essentially says we will work together to do our best to eliminate those labs. 10 years later, we're finally there. So this current school year that we're just about to wrap up, again, 10 years after that MOA, we ran this year 24 10th-period labs between the two high schools, which was a student count in those labs of 520 students. So it's a significant number of students that have continued to be expected to be attending lab after school, which is essentially what it is. So if I break up the concerns about the 10th-period lab, just, you know, so again, sort of summarizing decades of concerns, when we think about it through the lens of kids, students who have been assigned to a 10th-period lab have a longer school day than others. They come in first period, many of them, and they stay through 10th period once or twice a week, depending on their schedule. Having a 10th-period lab restricts their access to after-school clubs and activities because those tend to meet during 10th period. And students who then have 10th-period lab have limited access to other teachers for help after school because if I have to go to my chemistry lab or my earth science lab, that means I can't be working with my math teacher, my social studies teacher, or my English teacher after school for some additional help. So that has put those kids at somewhat of a disadvantage. In terms of the teachers and the program itself, science teachers have been the only teachers at the high schools expected to teach 10th period, and it's just been part of, again, the expectations that we've held for them. This means that they in turn have had reduced access to collaborating with their colleagues after school or meeting with students after school. If a science teacher is absent for the day, and it's the day that they have a 10th-period lab, the chances are that lab period will not be covered by their sub. So lab gets canceled for the students on that day because the sub does not work that 10th period. And that's particularly true when it is a colleague in their building who's covering their classes. And we've been doing unfortunately a lot of that over the last couple of years due to the sub shortage. Other teachers in the building will pitch in and cover classes for absent teachers, but if I'm an English teacher and I'm pitching in to help a colleague in covering, I'm not going to cover a 10th-period lab. So lab gets canceled for those students on that day. And in terms of the program, 10th-period lab is often not scheduled continuously with the class period itself. So you might have, you might go to your earth science class every day, third period, but then one day a week have your lab 10th period. Whereas your friends who are in earth science sixth period would have their lab on seventh period. So they get a double period once a week for that lab experience and more hands-on experience. This year, we were presented with concerns through a different lens, and it was a very significant lens, and it's one that I know you as the board are very, very well aware of. And that is the problem with transportation. So this school year alone, we started the year, as you know, with no transportation for our Mendon High School students in the urban suburban program after school that would allow them to stay for a 10th-period lab and then be able to have transportation home. So right at the very beginning of the school year, any urban suburban student whose master schedule included a 10th-period lab had to be rescheduled out of that lab, which likely meant they missed out on some other class they were expecting to take because their schedule had to be redone. We, of course, have our own transportation limits, our severe bus driver shortage. On a good day, I've heard Darren say many times, we're running about 30% understaffed. We don't see this changing in the near future. On bad days, and there have been several bad days this year, we've had to cancel the after-school, the late bus runs. That's the bus run for kids who are in 10th-period lab, in addition to kids who are staying for an after-school club or activity. And I have given several polite reminders, but I have also received several polite reminders from science teachers that canceling a 10th-period lab is not the same as canceling an after-school club activity. It's canceling a required academic portion of their class. And so these are integral parts of the instructional program, and so to not be able to provide transportation is a significant problem. So we were challenged in about February with basically this statement that, starting with this coming school year, we could no longer schedule students for any academic coursework at the secondary level outside of our nine-period school day. We had to do away with the 10th-period labs. The 10th-period labs are inequitable for kids, they're inequitable for teachers, they're not best-practiced programmatically, and now we have the problem of not being able to guarantee transportation at the end of 10th period, and that's our legal responsibility. There have been a number of us at the district office level who this year have been engaged in a book study of the book A Beautiful Constraint by Mark Varden and Adam Morgan, and this was a great example of a beautiful constraint. 10th-period labs have been a problem for decades. We've known that there's a way to fix them, but we've never been really willing to dig in and make the changes that are necessary for fear of upsetting the apple cart. This transportation became that beautiful constraint that forced us into thinking more creatively to come up with a solution. So how do we move 10th-period labs into a nine-period day without negatively impacting other departments or students' ability to take other courses that they wanted to take? That was really at the crux of the problem. It's one thing to say, get rid of the 10th-period lab and just put it in the day, but that has implications. That's going to impact other courses that kids are taking. So you can imagine that that problem statement was alarming, to say the least, to members of many of our departments at the high school, whose programs are basically electives-based, and they were very worried that by moving labs into the day, that would eliminate some of their course offerings. So with Jeff's help, we reached out and we worked with some consultants at BOSI's and at campus, who work with Infinite Campus, and we used their good brain power and their knowledge of other schedules because sometimes we get blinded by what we've always known, and it gets hard to think outside of our own box. Utilized the members of the Secondary Academic Council, which consists of the high school administrators, the heads of counseling, middle school administrators, core area standards leaders, encore area standards leaders, and we really brainstormed options. We just put this problem straight out there and said, what do you think? What are some options that we could look at? And we batted around a lot of various possibilities, which we then took to our consultants that we were working at, at BOSI's, and had them play around with some of those things. And they were pretty quickly able to say, you know, this isn't really going to help you over here, and this isn't going to help, but here's something that might help. So through the course of several conversations with those folks, we landed on the concept of a six-day cycle as being the key to the solution. And then we trialed lots of different possibilities within that six-day cycle to get to where we finally got to with this. So before I flush it out for you in any more detail, I think it's really important, particularly for anybody who's watching this out in the audience and who has high school kids, to understand what we're not doing. So when we, when I say that we're going to a six-day cycle, and I may have just gone over mine, but I'm going to back up a minute, I'm not going to tell you what we're not doing yet. So the six-day cycle, what does it do for us? It allows us to lock student lab periods around their phys ed schedule. So in our current schedule, students take phys ed twice a week one semester and three times a week the other semester. Because to receive phys ed credit in New York State for your diploma, you need to take the equivalent of a half year of phys ed every year. So we've been doing a two-three model. And labs dip in around that, but it's not perfect because of the way we've been scheduling phys ed. The six-day cycle will allow us to lock the labs in around a student's phys ed schedule, so phys ed classes will meet every other day all year. So a kid will not have two days one semester, three days the next, it's every day all year long. Lab periods will always, also always be able to be scheduled continuously to the class period. So no longer, if I have earth science third period, is my lab period dangling out there somewhere else during the day. If I have earth science third period, I have my lab period, that extra period for lab work, either second period or fourth period. So every student, every course for science will have a contiguous double block within the cycle for that lab time. We're able to schedule lab all six days of the cycle. Currently, we don't schedule any labs on Fridays at all because of the phys ed schedule. So currently, we're only using Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to schedule labs, and after-school, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and sometimes in a really bad year, Friday, because Tuesday are faculty and department meetings and whatnot. So this allows us to schedule labs every single day of the cycle without conflicts. There are also some additional benefits because, as you are probably aware, our elementary school is already on a six-day cycle, has been for many years. Our middle school is on a day-one, two, which is really a compressed six-day cycle, if you think about it. So for our traveling teachers, having the schedules aligned K-12 will make their lives easier. For some of our service providers, it's going to make a much smoother delivery of services. So now, what we're not doing, we're not doing a rotating schedule. So some of you might know about or hear about six-day schedules that actually rotate through the day so that first period one day becomes the second period the next the day, so that first period one day becomes the second period the next day. We're not doing that. First period is first period every day. We're not doing block scheduling. That's a bad rumor that might be out there. We're not doing block scheduling. Bosse's tried to get us to look at block scheduling. I said, "We're not starting a conversation in March about changes to schedule that will involve a block schedule in September." We don't run that way. So no rotating, no block. Much about a student's day will look exactly as it does right now. If I have English second period, I will have English second period every single day, 40 minutes a day, all year long. Nothing changes. So what does change? What will this look like? This is a lot of things on the screen, but let me just explain to you a little bit. This is what a student's schedule, a portion of a student's schedule will look like if they were to be taking two lab sciences, one AP and one region science. So our AP sciences will have their labs meet essentially twice every six days for the first three quarters of the school year. Regions classes will have their labs meet once every, once every six days for the first three quarters of the school year. Fourth quarter, we flip. AP labs drop to once a cycle, Regions bumps up to twice a cycle, till we get to a little better balance of our minutes prior to exams. I choose this as an example schedule to show you because it does a couple of things. It shows you how the labs weave around the phys ed classes. So there's always, there's lab phys ed, labs, lab phys ed. And what this also, this was an important realization for us, because we have a lot of kids who take multiple lab science classes, particularly as they get to be juniors and seniors, and it's often a combination of an AP science and a region science. So needing to fit all of those labs in becomes a challenge. If we had included any more lab periods in the cycle for either the AP classes or the Regions classes, we wouldn't have been able to lock them both in around the same phys ed period. So instead of two science classes essentially taking up three periods in a student's day with phys ed, we would have had a fourth period that was eaten into by labs for one of the classes or another. That would have taken an entire course out of the student's schedule that they would want to take. So that's how we got to the number of lab periods per cycle. And again, this slide is pretty deliberate in that this is a very typical combination for upperclassmen. And our counselors, Eric Domros and Lyndrake are our master schedulers at the two buildings, they're both counselors. They have been doing master schedules for us for years and years, and they know the work so deeply and so well that they were able to go into this process, being able to think about what are the most common combinations of two lab sciences that kids are likely to take. So they built the master schedules with those understandings in mind in order to lock the appropriate sciences together around the phys ed classes. So it's a little messy, but it does, it makes sense. So currently, so this is, this is what we're currently running on a weekly schedule in terms of lab minutes only. So this takes out the class periods, which again are 40 minutes a day, 180 days a week. So currently, Regions lab class, Regions lab meet once a week for 40 minutes, and that's the same every quarter, so you get to a total of 1,440 minutes. State requirement is a minimum of 1,200 minutes for Regions lab science class in order to sit for the Regions exam. So we are still up over that minimum by a pretty substantial, or we are currently over that minimum by a pretty substantial number. Our AP classes run lab twice a week, same thing every quarter for that total of 28, 80 minutes. So that's what it looks like currently. And this would assume that you never have a Monday holiday, a lab on Monday, where your Monday holiday is going to cancel your lab, or a Thursday holiday or whatnot, right? So if you're running a Monday-through-Friday schedule and you have lab every Monday, you don't have lab on any of those Monday holidays, or if you, right? So those get subtracted out. This would be the ideal, the maximum number of minutes any student could have. Going forward, if we were to, what we're looking at again is making a change in the scheduling between quarters three and quarter four. So students in a Regions class will have one lab per six-day cycle for the first three quarters, and then two labs in the six-day cycle for the fourth quarter as they lead towards the Regions exam. So we boost up their lab minutes, their class time, as they get towards the exam. We accomplish that by pulling back on the AP lab minutes when we hit fourth quarter, which is essentially after the students have taken the AP exam. There is, as you can see here, this gives us a few more minutes in the Regions classes than we have right now, but there is a drop in the AP minutes. So one possibility that we will look at for next year is making a slight adjustment and basically adding two cycles into the third quarter, so that the AP classes pick up an additional four lab periods prior to their AP exam. So that's still being sort of played through at the high schools. So these are the, some of the things that we had to really keep in mind as we talked about the schedule, and these are kind of bullet points that I shared with the science teachers as we went through this as well. Getting rid of the 10th period lab was something that we no longer had a choice about. This, this became a had-to-happen for lots of important reasons. We worked under a very tight timeline. So again, the decision was made in February that starting in September, we needed to make this change. That's a really tight timeline, given the fact that the master schedulers start their work the day that we come back from April break. So we really had about six weeks to figure out what we were going to do before we had to start building the master schedule. So it may not be perfect. What we came up with for next year may not be perfect. It may not be the best model. It's the model we were able to create and put in place, but we will take a look at it, and we will make whatever adjustments we need to make as we learn from next year. And it was really important as we went through this process, important for our students, important for our teachers, important for the community, that in doing this, we didn't in any way diminish the depth and breadth of our electives programs. We wanted our students to continue to be able to take whatever courses in whatever departments they wanted to take, including being able to take multiple lab sciences, if that's what they want to do, including be able to take multiple art classes, business classes, et cetera, in around their science classes. So we really wanted to preserve the depth and breadth of our programming. There's no such thing as a perfect schedule. That was the other reminder I had to keep saying to people and over and over again. When you create a master schedule, you can have maybe two priorities that drive the work. If you're really creative, you might get to two and a half. But you can't have everything be a priority, it just doesn't work. So there's no such thing as a perfect schedule. We've had lots of questions about our kids, are students going to have to make choices? Are the things they aren't going to be able to take? Students have always had to make choices. That's part of the scheduling process. They submit their course requests to their counselor in January. The counselors do their best to meet all that's on a student's wish list, but every year, students have to make choices, that not everything will fit in. Our responsibility as a district is to provide equitable opportunities for all of our students, and we do believe that this six-day cycle and the way we're handling the labs provides that in a much better way. Currently, as of right now, both high schools have created their master schedule using that six-day cycle. They started the work with the science classes and the science labs. It was the first thing that they laid out in the schedule to make sure that they could get everything in, all of those contiguous labs and classes, all the labs wrapped around the phys ed sections. High school counselors are currently in that annual process of meeting with students about what fit in, what didn't fit in, what other choices might you want to make about your schedule. And we at this point can say confidently, we've not lost any courses in any department as a result of making the change to the six-day model. So with that, I will leave it to you and if you have any questions about any of this work.
Melanie, I would just add that when we started this work, we said that this had to be done, but we didn't know if it would be able to be done, right? So it really has been a work in progress as it relates to our consultants and internally people looking at trying to put this together. And there was one day that was relatively recent where the sun came out and the stars aligned, and the best part to this is that students no longer have to choose what they're doing after school. That opens opportunities. And the second part that was a priority is not limiting students' options and opportunities for other courses. Both seemed to prove true, and it's also my understanding that as we ran this, the, when we were at a point where we could run this as a, in the sandbox, the percent of conflicts were much less than a normal year.
I would say the percent of conflicts at Sutherland was less, the percent of conflicts at Menden was about the same. Menden does, has had a little more of a challenge just because of their science room availability. So they've had to get creative in some room usage, so that was a little tighter at Menden. But when I talked with Eric last week, he said it's not anything outside the normal. And again, they're going through the process now of meeting with the kids to say, "This didn't fit in, what would you like to do instead?" But that's a routine part of our process every year. Yeah, yeah. So we were really pleased. So.
Just a quick question. Will there be an opportunity for parents to, or students to say, "This doesn't work"? I mean, what type of feedback will we be garnering?
Yeah, so we'll have to take a look next year. Our biggest concern certainly, and it's a concern, you know, that the science teachers have expressed, although when I shared all of this with them about three weeks ago, I guess, they were, they were so appreciative of how we'd really looked at everything, and their response was, "We were in a tough spot, we understand the change had to be made, it looks like we did the best possible job with what we had in front of us." The concern that remains for me and for some of that is the decrease in the minutes for AP science labs. So we're going to have to take a look at what impact is that having, get feedback from kids, get feedback from teachers, and see what that means. Unlike Regions class, Regions science program, there are no minimum number of minutes required for science labs for AP. There's not a minimum minute requirement in order to sit for the AP exam. There are some lab experiences that all students need to have that we're well able to fit into our program and our number of minutes. But it's going to require some adjustment on the part of some of the teachers to think a little bit strategically about how to readjust some of their plans, so.
I'm also interested in to what extent having all students have that contiguous block of lab right after their class, how that may offset some of the lost minutes in AP.
Yeah, and I have to believe that it will. And that, and the Science Department unanimously saw that as a huge win. I mean, that's something that they've been after for a long time, and every time we've, every time we've talked about the schedule, people who are not science teachers will say, "Well, it'd be a lot easier if we didn't have to connect the lab to the class." And like in a science teacher's mind, it's just like, "No, that is, that's going backwards." And it's not that it's, it's not that it's the lab activity that always has to happen during that lab period, but having that 80-minute block that you can count on once a week or twice a week just gives you a chance to really go in-depth with kids with some hands-on messy stuff. It's really important to the program. And to have that, the situation we're in right now is teachers might have that for two of the sections of a class, but then they don't have it for the other two, and that becomes a planning issue. That, I mean, that's different instruction that you have to provide. So overall, I think people are feeling pretty good about this.
The one question I'd have, and I can't tell from this chart, how many of the AP minutes currently are past the AP exam? Because it would reduce the difference in total AP minutes.
Yes, yes, and I think I have that written down somewhere, but it's, I'm going to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. So current, so currently, this is our, this is our current schedule, so currently there are 720 lab minutes in fourth quarter. So depending on where the AP exam falls within the two-week window, it could be that, you know, a student might have as many as 600 of those after the exam, or they might have 400 after the exam.
The gap is much smaller.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks Melanie.
Thank you.
Special Education Report, Elizabeth. Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Mike.
There is not a need for an executive session this evening. I want to thank Shayna for her work for policy recommendation, first reading, comprehensive student attendance. This, essentially what you see in front of you brings into compliance our current practices. It's been an older policy that is for your review. And then just a reminder that our next board meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, June 21st at 7:00 PM, and that's being moved to Wednesday, June 22nd at 7:00 PM, and that's due to a scheduling conflict, and thank you all for being flexible with that date. And that's all I have.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Pete? And I saw Jeff's hand, too. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Old business? New business? That brings us to public comment. Deb, do you have any cards? Nothing? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Ted and Sarah? All in favor? Opposed? No? All in favor? Can I just take that one more time? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.